Thanks everybody for coming. We're gonna do, uh, this is the first actual open forum. We're gonna have some questions for our candidates for the 2015. Um, I ask that you try to be quiet and during the questions and things like that for our candidates. We're gonna start off with some introductions. So, we will go around the room and we can start with Dennis. We can start with you if you wanna tell them who you are. If you have any experience with the city and what motivated you to run for this position? And then last but not least, an interesting tidbit about yourself.
Uh, I'm Dennis Call Hammer, a lifelong resident of Pierce, Minnesota. For those of you in Healy High School, I live in Dr. Healy's house right up the street. Dr. Healy was the namesake of our high school and town. Currently work for the city of Little Falls. Prior to that, I worked for an engineering firm for a number of years. I worked for a commercial construction company for a number of years. Uh, why I'm motivated to run for the mayor position? To me, it's not an election unless you have a choice. And I think people, you know, should have, be able to have a choice. So, I just thought, uh, my job, my current job gives me the time to be home so I can devote time to, uh, to being the mayor. Uh, interesting tidbit about myself, um, I'm a private pilot. I have an airplane. Well, all I got right now. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thanks Dennis. Steph?
I'm Steph Byton. I am also a lifelong resident of Pierce, married to Mark, have three children, Luke, Sarah, and Steven. I have been on the council for the past eight years. I, um, thought about not running this year and I thought about it for a while and I feel I have more that I can offer. It's been very rewarding to work, um, on the council, work with a number of different people, um, and just see the city continue to improve, um, some of the projects we've done and things, so I've really enjoyed that and hope to be able to continue on with that. Um, I have no interesting tidbit like Dennis, but, um, no, sorry. Okay. I'm a nurse at the hospital. I'm on the first response team here in Pierce and I like making cards and scrapbook pages.
Thank you Steph. Mark?
Okay, my name is Mark Jevazinski. I've been a resident of Pierce since 2007 and before that I grew up in Little Falls, graduated from high school there in 2003. I worked as a deputy sheriff with the Morrison County Sheriff's Office. I've been employed there for eight years. I also worked part-time as an officer with the Pierce Police Department, so that would be my city experience. And I guess I'd just like to note that if elected, I'll be resigning from that position just to eliminate any conflict there. I'm also on the first response team and the Pierce Fire Department. Um, I live here with my wife Megan and my children Elijah, who's three, and Noah, who's two. Um, I guess one interesting thing about myself would, uh, again, I, uh, I consider myself a young person who's interested in the future of the community. I guess one way to show how young I am is I think all of my opponents have kids that are my age.
We are mom and dad.
Thanks Mark. Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Mendon. Uh, been a resident, lifelong resident of Pierce also. Uh, served as mayor for eight years prior to being on the council here for the last four. Uh, was involved in the city for many years, was on the planning and zoning prior to that and always had an interest in, in the city government and to keep the community going in ways and, and working with the people and the residents. So, uh, I'd like to run again and, uh, we'll see. Interesting tidbit, I guess, uh, I've been a truck driver for 34 years with Coburn's and, uh, so I get through a lot of communities and I'd see a lot of things that I'd like to be able to bring back and see in different communities that maybe can benefit Pierce. So, thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Rick? My name's Rick Shablouski. I've been living in this community since 1981. Um, I've been a teacher at Healy High School since then. I teach, currently teach social studies to seventh graders, driver ed to ninth graders, and do behind the wheel in the summer and my off time. Coach, uh, right now I'm coaching football, helping out as a JV coach, and baseball, same thing. Um, see, the reason I decided to run for, for this council, I think, uh, I'm pretty well certain this is my last year of teaching and, uh, I'll have something, I think, out of my, uh, oh, your, your comfort zone. And, uh, this is something I, I've taught social studies, I've taught government, and be kinda cool to see some of the stuff that we talk about, work on, actually works. Um, as far as, um, tidbit of information, well, uh, I've probably ever been on the city council, I've had their children in school, except for Matt Bell, and I had him. So, um, and they're good kids, so they've done. But, uh, yeah, I enjoy, I've enjoyed teaching and I've joined the community and I think I can bring something, um, new vision, some positive voice for our community if I get elected.
Thanks Rick. Toby?
Well, I'm Toby Egan. I'm your current mayor. Uh, been so for the last eight years. Uh, I'm a 25-plus year resident of the city. Um, also a 19-year veteran. I'm now for Pierce Fire Department where I held a couple of positions, one being captain, one being fire chief. Um, decided I want to, wanted to run for city council because I wanted to see some change compared to the way things had been going. Um, love the job. Um, like Stephanie, I guess I thought about maybe not running. Takes a lot of energy, takes a lot of commitment, and I feel I have at least another couple of years, good years left in me. After Mark had said his kids are as old as, or he's as old as my kids, I'm not sure that, uh, I've really got that much energy in my pocket. Thanks for making me feel young, Mark. Sorry about that. Interesting tidbit about myself, um, I've, I've got a couple hobbies. I guess I'd get into one of those. Number one is, uh, I love playing in a band. I've been doing that since I've been about, uh, 14, 15 years old, so I enjoy that. And like Dennis, I like to fly, um, kinda do it a little more primitive style than what Dennis does, um, but, uh, it's a great pastime and it's a lot of fun and, uh, so yeah, that's, uh, that's me in a nutshell.
Thanks Toby. All right, at this time, I'm gonna ask Dennis and Toby to actually, we'll take the most lead seats. And, uh, we're gonna start with questions. The first one, they have Nikki, um, give a little information about how the two-minute answer is going to work.
Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question, so I'll give you a warning for 30 seconds and then another warning for 10 seconds when you're gonna kinda wrap up your question for your answers.
And who will be facilitating this open forum? We have Molly, Otrimba, Andrew, Jeff Gross, and Grant Moody. All right, so at this time, um, we're gonna have our first question with the council. Just a little information, um, at about 6:40, we're gonna be switching over to the mayor candidates. Any questions? All right, Jeff?
In our eyes, Pierce offers very little for kids our age looking for something to do. On the weekends and vacations, what ideas do you have for providing a space or activity for the teenagers in our community?
Rick, do you wanna answer that first and we will both walk right to that question? Do you want to repeat it or anything?
Yeah, uh, I think I get his drift on, uh, this has always been a concern for kids, even while I was growing up, what you do. And, uh, I think today's kids are more centered on doing things in, like, online, computer stuff. As far as stuff that's available here, I think we have a lot to offer right now. I know in the summertime for my kids, they like to go out to golf, play tennis and something like that. But I think you're talking about things that we could do as a city to help you guys have something to do, uh, is how I get your question, right? So, I think, you know, you can talk about things, first of all, you have to see how, what things cost. I know, like, they've tried to have things in, uh, in public buildings before, they've had kids places per se. And kids don't spend a lot of money in there and they're hard to economically run, uh, well. But again, I think there's things you could do, you can think like skate parks like Royalton had, uh, that's been talked about. Uh, I know they've come up with, uh, that water park idea that's been thrown around by the city council, that's pretty much public knowledge. Those are things I think that, uh, kids would like. Um, if they're economically feasible, you have to find that out too. But, uh, again, I think, uh, you know, there's a lot of things kids can do that are productive without having to have a building for them to go in. Like you said, sometimes when they've tried this stuff in the past, it hasn't been real successful, but I think if they could probably pursue and try to increase our, uh, our issue with, uh, with this, with this water park, that'd be a very fantastic for our city. Kids would enjoy that in the summertime. And, uh, like you said, skate park is always an option as well. That's good. Is there someplace that they could have a building where they could go and hang out? I don't know. That would be something, somebody would have to try it again, 'cause I don't, uh, like right now, there's, there's a lot of areas where they can do that, but that's what I think.
Um, well, I, again, I, with Rick, as we gotta look at finances to go along with
it, we have first, um, looked into a skate park several times. We've had groups of, of people from the school and kids come together to talk about, um, working on a skate park. Um, again, I, I think that that's an excellent idea. We need some, a combination of leadership, I feel, from the city as well as from the community, whether it's the students and the parents together, um, to work on something like that. I think that's something, you know, again, to look at feasibility with that. We've been, I've actually been on the committee for this pool study that we've been doing. Um, still kinda in the works, trying to look at finances and locations and different things and, you know, how we could make that work in the city. Um, I think, I mean, we have the golf course, um, which is something that not all kids necessarily like, but also there is some basketball courts and, and the swimming grounds there for the time being. Again, um, you know, hard for everybody to get involved in it, we try and maintain those as best we can, but I think it's, it's good to try and find some opportunity for, for us to work with the kids, work with the parents, work with the city, kind of come up with something to keep our young people, um, involved, keep our young people, for lack of a better way of putting it, out of trouble, um, you know, finding some good things for them to do. Um, we would have, are working on a trails, trails project, um, to try and connect, you know, like walking trails and those types of things, um, which isn't necessarily everything the kids want, but you could bicycle and do different things on that too. So, I think that we have a lot of things we can work on to keep our young people safe and, um, occupied with good things.
Well, you know, all, all the different recreational facilities like you might be talking about are good things to have, they're nice things to have around, like the skate park and the swimming pool and all that. The problem with it is it all costs money. The money has to come from someplace and, um, I'm not sure that's something I'd wanna burden the taxpayers with, to be honest with you. If, if the money can come with a grant from someplace else, that would be fine. But as far as establishing a facility like that and putting 100% of the burden on the taxpayers here, that's something that I would be against, to be honest with you. We have an excellent golf course here, there's a swimming beach here, there's basketball courts and tennis courts and playgrounds and things like that. That's all excellent stuff we already have in place. I think that's stuff, I think that's, stuff a lot of times gets overlooked, especially now when so many teenagers nowadays are so into technology, they almost forget to kinda see what's around them. But the, uh, the projects that are, that have been talked about, like the skate park and the swimming pool or splash pad or whatever you wanna call it, that's all good ideas, it's just, it has to be done feasibly and economically and it has to be affordable.
Thanks Mark. Mike?
Uh, kinda on the same thing. We do have a lot of things to offer in Pierce. I think it's great. We, uh, as a city council, keep things up. Um, we, uh, we're looking at the skate park and the splash pad and, and, again, it all comes back to budget and money and, and taxpayers. Um, one of the things that I think would be a, uh, asset is if we could get maybe a group of, set up a committee with some of the students around town here and, uh, parents and maybe brainstorm a little bit to see what we, what everybody's kinda looking for and come up with an idea and, and look at it. Uh, so, we wanna keep our kids busy. And you can always come up here to city hall, we'll find something to do. But, uh, yeah, I think if we, uh, could get a committee together to look at things and see where, where, what kids are focusing on or where they would like to see things go differently, I'd be open to that.
Thanks Mike. All right, we're gonna have our next facilitator come up. Um, please keep in mind everyone that these questions were either brought in to us, to city hall via online, um, there was no drop-offs, and, um, the school also put some together too. So, these are questions that are just being brought forward, um, from our community. Nothing was put together here, nothing was, we did not touch anything. These are brought to city hall, okay? And?
In recent years, the council has voted to cash in CDs to pay off city debt. How do you propose to promote fiscal responsibility and rebuild the city's reserve funds?
Um, I get to start, huh? Um, well, in cashing off, uh, cashing out the CDs to pay off the bonds, um, current what we had done is looked at how much we were paying in interest on our bonds and how much we were collecting an interest, uh, or collecting an interest on bonds and how much we were paying out in our, in our debt. And it was really a no-brainer, we were paying quite a bit in interest and we were getting about a half a percent interest, um, just on our CDs. So, in doing so, um, we thought we were saving some money that way. As far as replacing that, as we go along, um, as for instance, our golf course fund, we put money away in our CDs every year from them. Um, as we look at our income, our electric bills and all those types of things, as we have, uh, for lack of a better word, excess, um, whether we've gotten some, some money back, um, from different things, we have tried to reinvest those in the CDs again. Um, but at that point, you know, um, when you're not paying out so much in interest and you've got no debt to pay off, you have more reserve to put away and save. So, you just take that excess that you were paying off on, on, um, your debt and manage to put that away, you know, to save it up and then having to put into, back into another CD. And, um, you know, hopefully the interest rates go up and it'll be more economical to leave them in the CDs, but at this point, it's been much more effective to pay off the debt.
Mark?
Well, first of all, I think cashing in a CD to pay off debt is a horrible idea. That money's been set aside for a long time and if we need to do that, that's telling me that there's a shortfall someplace else. For example, one wouldn't cash in their retirement account to pay off their mortgage, that just doesn't sound like a very good idea. You wouldn't have anything left over. To me, that money's supposed to be set aside for a rainy day, so to speak. And what happened a couple months ago, when the city did that to pay off the Cassie Street Bond, I just, I didn't feel that was a rainy day situation and I felt that situ, that could've been dealt with a little bit differently. So, um, if there's a shortfall someplace, then that's something that needs to be addressed. But I think that under those circumstances, we should be cashing in city investments to pay off debt.
Thanks Mark.
I was part of that decision and it is tough. Um, when you're only getting half a percent on your money and you're paying 6, 8% interest, it, and my idea is it was a smart idea to pay off. Um, at some point, on the Cassie Street project, we are still collecting some of the assessments and, and, uh, payoff deals, so that money will go back into the city coffers and, and we can reinvest into starting another CD. Um, it's, it's tough. One of the big things that play in is, yeah, the economy right now, you gotta look at that. The other thing that's, uh, that kinda plays, from year to year, our LGA, which is our, our aide from the state of Minnesota, that can vary, you know? This year, I believe we had, uh, about $220,000 come in on that. Um, if we don't utilize all that money to run the city, excess there can be put back into a CD also. So, there's different ways and you gotta look, it, it changes year by year. The economy plays a big role in that, LGA. We've done very well here in the city of Pierce for the past, uh, eight, nine years in holding the levy, where we haven't raised the levy, don't know that we can always stay at that, but, uh, we do the best we can. We have to be responsible, it's public money, it's, it's your guys' money out there and five, six people up here are elected to do the best they can with it and, uh, it's a, it's an ongoing game, every, every meeting, something. So, thank you.
Well, you know, like Mike just said, is kinda was my point here, is that people are put in this position to make decisions. A lot of decisions aren't popular, a lot of decisions take guts to do. Whenever you make decisions with somebody else's money, you know, there's always gonna be criticism. Um, I grew up, when I grew up as a kid, we always were taught to pay our bills, you know, get our bills paid, we find a way. Our community is a very, um, frugal community when it comes to smart spending. And I think sometimes you have to make decisions that aren't always the pop, most popular. But to me, I think I said, I, I don't think, uh, any decision the city councilman makes, this decision is their, their priority, is what they think is best for the community. And in the situations you're talking about with Cassie Street, but not, um, you know, I, I don't, I think it might be something that had to be done, I wasn't on the council at that time, not as familiar as these, uh, other people are with it. But again, I think sometimes you just have to do what you think is best and that's why you're sitting on here.
Thanks Rick. All right. Molly, you're first. Can you, can you, anytime you have any questions to, uh, for, maybe, who's asked? All right, Mark, you're gonna go first.
Okay.
Many of the answers in the Morrison County record indicate that attracting new businesses in Pierce is a top priority. What do you feel is the most effective way to do that?
Well, there could be some sort of tax incentive done. I know the, uh, the council has recently sold off for a dollar lots of property in the, in the industrial park and waived some sewer and water assessments in order to draw out some new businesses into town. Um, I think that was probably a good idea in looking at it, because that's a good way for someone to get a business started. Uh, the only thing that I would've done differently is if we're going to give some sort of incentive for a new business to locate here, is there has to be some sort of guarantee or some sort of dialogue have taken place that we're going to create some new jobs here. 'Cause if we can't do that, it's hard for the community to grow. Because people, for the most part, like to live where they work. If we can't create new jobs here and bring people in the town to work and bring people in the town that are gonna come here and work and buy homes and spend money at the other businesses and put their children through our school district, it, it's hard for the community to grow. So, any sort of incentive we can do within reason to help businesses get established, I think we need to look at, but we also need to guarantee that there're gonna be jobs created as a result.
Thanks Mark. Mike?
And I agree with Mark. Right now, the city has in place, you know, we, we've got the industrial park lots, which are, there's only maybe a few left. Um, we also started about, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, a EDA fund. And, uh, what it is, is it's an economic development authority and there's another committee that reviews it, then it goes to the city council. With people approaching the city with a new business, uh, we would actually be able to give them some gap financing. We're not the, the primary lender, but i, if there's a, uh, a gap between the bank or their private lender or whatever, the city can help out. And, uh, that's a good tool. Economy and the, and, uh, everything plays a factor into, you know, the economy is starting to come back, I feel a little bit in the rural area, like for us, and, uh, you know, hopefully we can, uh, get some things going or, and sent, give some more incentives for people to come here and start a new business. Industrial park is one of our major tools right now. With that possibly filling up, I think, uh, we, the city needs to look at expanding maybe industrial park and looking at purchases of land to maybe increase the, uh, city limits, so to speak, of the city. And, uh, as those things go, uh, like I say, it's a never-ending working project and, and you gotta do the best you can. I think we do have a lot of good incentives in place and we wanna create some jobs and businesses and, uh, to keep moving forward.
Thanks Mike.
Well, um, Pierce has got so much to offer, people that are not from our community, they look at our community a lot of times with a lot of envy. Um, it's great that we can get people interested in looking at our community. I don't think we're ever gonna have a super large facility where we're gonna employ hundreds of people, that's not gonna happen. But we can always look at, like what Mike said earlier, uh, with expanding that industrial park area, um, and making things available for people that are, you know, students right now that want to live in this community, there's nothing for them, there's not a place where they can actually, uh, draw their paycheck. And, uh, it would be awesome if we could get, uh, some way to purchase some more land to expand that industrial park, 'cause that would, you know, be an incentive for, um, other businesses to move into our community. Um, the tax increments financing, we talked about earlier, uh, that's another way of doing it. But again, it's, it's something as a city council member, you know, you've gotta look at the big picture again. Uh, I thought our city council did a wise thing in trying to get some of that land, sold for a dollar. Um, that's, that's great. But again, we need people working there and that, that's would be one of the things I would love to see happen here. Uh, like I said, Pierce has got a great school system, we've got a clean, safe town, we've got a lot of things going for it, um, people will notice that. And I know people personally that have moved to this community because of that, um, you know, whether they're retired people or whatnot, I think it's important that businesses come to our community, but it's also important that we have people that are interested in coming here, being positive citizens and keeping up our, our community the way it is.
Um, some of the things, I guess I think are good ways to attract businesses here are to try and keep our taxes, um, as low as we can. We still need to have, we still need to pay for things. Um, so far, the last few years, we've been able to keep the taxes with 0% increase. Sometime we're gonna have to increase those, but at this point, try and keep the taxes low and keep our services, um, high, have good sewer and water, have good, uh, fire and safety, have good streets, those types of things, try and keep things, um, workable for a business to come in, for their delivery trucks, for their people, try and attract businesses by having gap financing with the EDA, the TIPS, those types of things. Industrial park has been, in the last year, has been a good thing to get some businesses in there. Some of them are people that were in other buildings that have been able to build a new building or move over there. Those things will generate a new, a bigger tax base, those types of things will help. Um, you know, uh, keeping the city, keeping the city functioning well, businesses will come and look and see that yes, indeed, the city is able to run itself, maintain itself, look good, have good schools, um, those types of things. Have something as simple as when they come in to inquire about lots of things like that, having knowledgeable people in the offices to come in and answer their questions and help them with things. Um, so those are all things that business people look for, is to have resources to come to. Um, we have the small business grants that we did some, and we had available to fix up the main street businesses and some houses and things like that. I think all those things are important to help attract businesses and people to the community.
Andrew?
This is the final question, by the way. In a quick survey of our class, over half of the students felt the appearance of Pierce was about average. What do you think could be done to make Pierce a more appealing city to future businesses and residents?
Mike, you're up.
Uh, actually, I drive through a lot of communities. I think Pierce is on the top end of it. I think, uh, our recent years back here, a few years when we did the Main Street project, I think it dressed up Main Street really well with the new street lighting and the, uh, new road and curb and sidewalk. Um, our main street is what you see when you drive into town and that's, that's your kicker. Um, I think it looks good. We sh, right now, there's not a lot of places on Main Street to grow. Again, you know, you look at our business, well, we kinda have the uptown and downtown area and, uh, all the business places are full, there's nothing, nothing empty. And, uh, I don't know, to, uh, to grow the city... And, I don't know, to grow the city, I think we need to look at the industrial land as far as gaining on what the last question was. So, I don't know, I think so far, we're doing pretty well and it would be, you know, the residents have the main things to go to. We have the grocery store, we have the pharmacy. So I think we're pretty, pretty stable. It would be nice, again, like Rick brought up, I don't see that we're going to get, ever get a Walmart here or, you know, we're just kind of in between communities that are a little bit bigger than us, that support those types of businesses, but we do have the main necessities here, so.
Well, you know, Mike made the comment of Pierce looks really nice in his eyes because he's driven through a lot of communities. Being a teacher and a coach, I've been through a lot of towns, I think Pierce is very nice. It's very well upkeep, the upkeep is very, very good. In the wintertime, our snow removal is awesome. The summertime, you see our streets are always nicely taken care of. The road projects that we've done in the city have made our city very attractive. There's nothing worse than having potholes on Main Street. It's like if somebody comes into your house and looks and the first thing they see is a whole bunch of stuff laying in the front door, what's the impression that you have? Coming in from both directions, we have, as far as businesses and stuff, it's set up fine, like we have everything we need. It'd be nice if the old bank wasn't where it is now, you know, that's, not a lot we can do about that. But again, I think the thing that you're talking about is trying to make our city nicer. We've got parks on Main Street that are very well kept up. The stores are well-run, the people that run the stores are very personable people. They're people, people in, they just, I think our city has got a lot more going for it than a lot of cities. Like I think a lot of people are envious of what we have in this community. We have people that care about the community, take pride in it. That goes, that starts with the parents and goes all the way through. Their kids are raised here and like again, if we can keep our people here that keep that pride going, we're going to end up having our community grow in ways that might not show on the pavement, but in the community, in the feeling. The things that our community does, the Oktoberfest parade, stuff like that, there's a lot of community pride. And it brings a lot of people in and interested to our community. You know, the Rock Roll Stroll, stuff like that, that's awesome, that gets our community out there and that's what people want to know about.
Again, I agree with Mike and Rick, our city is looking very good. The Highway 25 project, the historical lighting that the planning group had come up with, turned out wonderful. Streets, you know, streets without potholes are great. Couple of things that the committee had come up with and has implemented are the planters, the flower boxes and the benches along the streets in front of some of the businesses is awesome. It adds, in the summertime, adds the appeal, has a bench to come and sit down on, the business owners and everybody take care of those and have those out there. I think that makes the town, as you're driving through, look attractive. You have some flowers growing and people sitting on benches and visiting and things. Our park down, over by the fire station, has grown, just from just a little spot to a gazebo to Father Pierce statue and coming up is going to be the Veterans Memorial. I think that's going to add a lot of appeal attractiveness, that's going to be landscaped a little bit more and things changed around there. I think all those things are great things. I think with the new street lighting, the new flags that we put up for summer and winter, I think that adds a lot to our city, our Christmas decorations, those kinds of things. So, different times of the year, I think that those are some things, updating our business fronts and keeping those maintained, keeping, if there are buildings that are falling in disrepair and that kind of things, finding ways to help the people get those cleaned up and fixed up, I think those are things we can do to maintain that appeal and hopefully get people interested in coming, you know, coming to town, so.
Well, touching on what both Mike and Rick have said, you know, myself working as a sheriff's deputy, I've probably driven down every street in every city in Morrison County at least a couple of times. In comparison, I'd say Pierce is very much above average in its general appearance. We have, you know, the Main Street project just got redone with the antique looking light fixtures and the flags and the flowers and the benches. Recently, the city also took part in the Small Cities Development Program where businesses and residents were able to obtain lower no-interest loans to fix up their storefronts or fix up their homes. Well, I've been out campaigning, I've talked to a lot of business owners who were very grateful to be able to take advantage of that program to upgrade their storefronts. So we do have like nice-looking businesses, we have a nice-looking business district, it's now run down like you see in other communities. Like Rick said, it would be nice if somebody do something with the old bank down there because it did have good food there. The street projects have been coming along nice, I know that there's more that are lined up to be done. But generally, I think Pierce is more above average than just average as far as its general appearance. And we don't, we don't have a lot of potholes in our streets. Our, all of the city's departments do a very good job in the things that they do, whether it's taking care of the golf course or the snow plowing and the lawn mowing in the summertime. You never have to worry about that here because it's always taken care of. The police department does an excellent job of enforcing the junk and the public nuisance ordinances so people won't have a lot of junk cars and other garbage laying in their front yards that might look not appealing, so. I really think the city does an excellent job doing what it's doing. One more thing, as far as like the rundown storefronts, the city recently was able to help facilitate, get the drugstore in across town to replace the building that was there, that was another nice thing to have, so. I think all in all, the city's general appearance is more way above average than just average.
Thanks, Mark. All right, thank you.
On behalf of all of the candidates, we are the candidates included, I would like to thank Scott, Mr. Damon and all the students for providing me and all of us this opportunity to express our opinions and answer some questions, so.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we're going to start our second round. Molly, you're up.
Hi. What's your name?
Molly.
Molly. Hi, Molly.
Attracting new businesses is important if we want our city to continue growing. But keeping the businesses already here is also important. What ideas do you have that would support current businesses and encourage them to expand?
Well, there's a couple of things. We worked extremely hard to keep our storefronts full. All the time I got elected, our economy took a turn for the worst, obviously, the housing market crashed. We started seeing empty storefronts within our city. We're very aggressive and very proactive at getting out there and helping people get back into these businesses through our EDA. By offering financing, some other incentives, things of that nature, to keep our storefronts full, first of all. That was the most important thing we had to do. The next thing that has to be done is we have to create a climate, a climate that's conducive to business along with the people in the city, okay? What I mean by a climate is, I believe city government responsibility and role is, is to ensure that people here can afford to live here. Not just barely afford to live here, but can afford to live here so they can spend money, okay? When people can spend money at our local businesses, our businesses will thrive, they will succeed. If government is taking too much of that money, okay, we're not a wealthy community. If you have a hundred dollars to spend during the year and the government takes twenty percent of that or fifteen percent of that, that's a lot less money you have to spend out into the community. So if we can create that climate, which we have, I mean, we have not raised taxes in eight years. We've put ourselves in a best financial situation that I think we could be in. Our financial advisor has put us within the top ten percent of all cities our size in the state of Minnesota, okay? There's a reason for that. The reason for it is we've been able to pay down debt, okay? Use that debt money to do things into the budget, to promote our city and make our city more affordable, more wasteful. So, that's it, I'm going to chill there.
This question, Toby and I were at the Commercial Club meeting here a few weeks ago and this question, a similar question kind of came up. And you look up and down Main Street, yes, there's some new businesses, but there's some businesses that have been here a long, long time. And that, I mean, that speaks volumes for what kind of city Pierce is. When you have a business that's been there for a hundred years, I mean, that's pretty rare in any business, you know, in any community to have a store that, you know, is around like that for that long. It all goes hand in hand. I mean, Toby, I agree with Toby, you know, keeping things affordable so people can live here. It was mentioned by the council people, we're never going to get an employer that's going to employ a hundred people. But if we get an employer that employs ten, fifteen, twenty, I think that's ten, fifteen, twenty families that could live here and support the businesses that are up and down Main Street. It hurts me that the old bank is sitting there empty. My mom and dad owned that for many years and it just pains my mom to see that thing sitting empty because that's a, that's a real, that's a cornerstone to have a local restaurant like that. And I don't know what the city could do about that. It just, it bothersome that that's sitting there like that because that was, your local restaurant is your gathering place for that. The things in place about attracting businesses, we're in the same boat every other community is. There's so many businesses out there, there are so many communities trying to attract the same businesses, that is a struggle. By maintaining your city in a quality way, roads that are accessible so you have the transportation infrastructure, I think those kinds of things are critical to keeping things going, attracting the businesses, keeping the residents affordable. Thanks for, for the presence.
What steps do the leaders of Pierce need to take in order to make Pierce a progressive city?
My turn?
Yes.
What steps can the leaders take to make Pierce progressive? Boy, you can go any which way with that one, but, you know, a lot of it goes back to the industrial park. You know, we basically gave away the lots we had there and at some point, we're going to have to expand that. Being progressive in land acquisition, not necessarily in that spot, creating another industrial park should that one get full, I think that's where the city's efforts need to be, need to be focused. I have heard talk about some street projects coming up. I, in my prior career with an engineering firm, I worked in numerous cities overseeing utility projects. I'm one for doing projects right that are going to last a long time. I'm not a big one for overlays, I'm not a big one for things like that, for patching things together. And eventually, you do those things properly and they're good for thirty years. If you bandit them, patch them together, you're good for four or five years and then you're back facing the same issues. I look at our Main Street project, yes, it looks nice. I think the city missed out on a real opportunity to enhance that even farther. Mid Dot, Mid Dot was going through here and I think the city could have, you know, went to the next step and said, hey, we'd like wider sidewalks. We'd like things, you know, some nice enhancements that really make a town attractive as you travel through them.
Just to kind of touch on Dennis's question, with the Highway 25 project, or your comment, I'm sorry. The city was strapped for room, you couldn't make sidewalks any wider because of the road right away that was in place. We also, when you get into our business districts, the street is so wide and very narrow. Our intersections are all very tight and narrow because the buildings are all so close to those. So it would have made that next step possible to try and make the sidewalks any wider. As far as progressive, you know, what type of progressive question would you have? I mean, as far as progressive in infrastructure, progressive in business, progressive in high-tech type things? Yeah, I mean, those are all things that I think would lead to being a progressive community. Progressive to me, being out in front, you know, trying to capitalize on high-tech type things, trying to capitalize on, Dennis had mentioned, street infrastructure projects, looking at new ways. And that's been really important because if you take a look at progression or what you feel is, would be considered that, you have to look at the way we've been functioning our government. Very unique, we have been very unique in the way we run our government. With the way we choose to run our government, by paying down our debt, keeping taxes low in the community. This is not an average way people run governments. Normally, governments are run by borrowing, taxing and spending and who refuses to do that, so.
In order for the city of Pierce to be vibrant, we need a diverse group of people. We seem to have a solid base of older people with great experience. What do you think needs to be done to keep young families in the area and/or attract new families?
That's a really good question. To attract new families, I mean, we have financial tools to be able to do that by keeping our taxes low and things of that nature. As far as bringing the kids back to our community, it's not going to be a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year thing. It's going to have to be phased out after a great length of time. We need business, you know, that's what's going to bring the young people back into our community. People who can come back to our community with good, high-paying jobs, that's what's going to attract people back to our community. Kids here, as you go off to college, probably one of the last places you're going to find yourself is coming back to the Pierce town right now and getting a good-paying job. Let's say you have a four- or six-year degree, there's not a lot, a lot of those jobs, scale-wise, that are going to match up with your education. So, yeah, and we can do that by starting to invest and continuing to invest into small businesses. Give these businesses a chance to grow and I think that's what we have to do.
At the Commercial Club meeting, George gave a presentation on the expansion of the high school and I think Rick made a comment that there's families that moved to Pierce because of the high school. George made the statement that twenty-two percent of the students in the high school are open enrolled students. And I was just blown back by that, that that many people think that highly of our school system. Which makes me, now my son has been out of school for, you know, six or eight years, so I don't, you know, I'm not that close to him anymore, but that really was a wake-up call to me that we have a real gem in our high school. Pierce is a bedroom community. People, people live here and work other places. They live here and work in Little Falls, work in Camp Ripley, work in State Cloud, work in Brainerd. Hard to change that, hard to get those kinds of jobs right out here in our back door. Somebody said, people like to work where they live, boy, that's true. I mean, in today's economy with three-dollar gas, if you can live and ride your bike to work, wow, that'd be great. In reality, is that something that, there's so many things that have to align, the stars have to really align to attract a business out here, some high-tech company that has twenty-five jobs that pay thirty dollars an hour. Boy, I mean, there's towns in line, you know, deep to try to attract that. there's, there's towns in line, you know, deep to try to attract that same business. You know, the, the other comment was made about Pierce is an attractive community. You know, in my work with the engineering firm, there was a number of communities I worked with, we worked in that, that, I believe in that statement. Pierce is well above average in appearance and, and stability and affordability and those kinds of things.
All right, final question, Jeff.
What role, if any, do we students, or do we as students have in making Pierce better place?
One more time?
What role, if any, do we as students have in making Pierce better place?
My turn? I think technology is the future. I mean, we all agree with that. The more, the more a student can concentrate in high school on, on the technology and stuff and invent the next pet rock, and bring it back to Pierce and build a, a building on the industrial park, those kinds of things, you know, you know, as a kid, when you're ten, eleventh, and twelfth grade, you're sitting in class thinking, man, I can't wait till I graduate to get out of here. Pierce is not a bad place. It's not a bad place. I went to, I left for college thinking, I don't know if we'll ever get back there. You know, certain things change, and, and I, I came back here after college and have never left. So, you know, keeping an eye on, on, behind you while you're looking forward is, is something that, that I think is, is critical. It's a wonderful community to live in. I've always felt that. I'm the biggest homer around. So, you know, what can students do? It was brought up about a skate park. I think that'd be a great idea. I mean, we talked about that years ago. Splash pad, swimming pool, those are all great ideas, but they all cost money. Building them is one thing, maintaining them is something else. So, you know, those, those kinds of, you know, student focus groups, what do you wanna see? You know, they, they say, well, there's nothing for the kids to do. What do you kids wanna do? You know, do you wanna sit and play with your video game, or do you wanna constantly text your friends, you know, things like that? There's, there's a myriad of options. I think our park is a diamond in the rough down here. I think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity that, of things, enhancements we could make down there that, that, you know, a splash pad, that's for little kids. A swimming pool, that's for the older kids. And, and, you know, so there's not one-size-fits-all that, that you're gonna do that says, okay, we're gonna have all these kids from seventh to twelfth grade, you know, happy. You know, twelfth graders don't even like hanging around with seventh graders. So it's, you know, there's, there's just so many variables out there.
I gotta agree with a lot of what Dennis said. I, I think the role of you guys could and should be, and Dennis kinda hit it on the head there, is, you know, what do you want? What do you like to see? You know, and I think that's important to get student groups, and those can be formed amongst you guys. Maybe with your advisor, Mr. Damon, you know, come to us with some ideas, you know. I, I think that's an important role for kids, is to make sure that your voices are heard. You know, we're not mind readers. We can think, oh, kids might like this, kids may love that. And, and, you know, you are the, you are the guys who are gonna have to come to us with, with some ideas. I know what would've been fun five years ago when I was a kid, you know, five years, four. You know, it would've been fishing and hunting and, and everything else. But, you know, I, I know today's kids, a lot of the kids, you know, aren't really into, to a lot of that sort of thing. So, yeah, times change. Our, our world changes, and what kids liked today, they probably wouldn't have liked, you know, a few years ago. So, no, I, I think that, that would be very important.
Thanks, Tony. All right. So that is what we have for the debate tonight. Can you, I hope everyone had a good time. If there's any questions, you can relay them maybe at a later time or at a council meeting, if there's something pressing. But that's what we have for questions tonight. Thank y'all for coming.